Let's call to order the special Board of Education meeting of Community High School, District 128 from March 8th to order. If I could ask everybody to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening, everybody. Roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Groody.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Kevin, are you here there?
Said here, but we didn't hear him.
Here.
Oh, okay. Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
We can't hear Casey or Kevin.
I know you said here, but I can't hear you.
And the funny thing is, I can hear Kevin, and I can't really hear you guys that well.
Now we can hear Casey.
Hey Kevin, you want to just check your mic too, please?
Testing, testing.
You're good.
There you go.
Gotcha. We're good? All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have everybody here. Our agenda tonight, we will open it up for public comment. I don't see anybody physically present, but I believe we have about eight emails we'll read into the record. And then we will further discuss our all-day in-person student attendance option, and that will adjourn the meeting after that. All right. Okay, Mary.
Hey, our first message tonight is from Adean and Stephen McGee. Dear Board and staff of D128, I write to you as a parent of a freshman at LHS. Firstly, I would like to commend LHS staff for getting the kids back into school hybrid, and also for the amazing effort of Coach Sam, Coach Mike, and others to make girls swim happen this fall. This has been a very trying, sad year for so many, and there have been positives such as the above that have kept us going. I do feel that right now, with the low numbers of COVID, vaccinations being increased, and society opening up, it is time for the kids to be back in school full-time. They have been through an awful lot this year, and their education, mental health, development, and social skills have been severely affected. We have light at the end of the tunnel, so let's be brave, positive, and smart, and bring the kids back to where they belong, at school. The number of COVIDs, the numbers of COVID in the community when the hybrid model started were extremely high, and have been decreasing all the time to an all-time low positivity rate, even lower than last summer. The kids are now socializing in friends' houses outside as the weather gets good, and can go out for food together as the community has reopened. They can wear masks, understand the importance of mitigation measures, and abide by rules. They have, they have learned a lot. I am at a loss as to why we would choose any other option other than to do what the count, the country and the world is doing, vaccinate and get back to normal. There comes a point when the negative and dangerous effects of learning from home and not have a real education environment far outweighs the risk of a virus with the low numbers we continue to see. As well as teachers being vaccinated, many more adults are vaccinated through their jobs or for other reasons. This is going to increase in a monumental way as J&amp;J vaccine becomes available, and I am confident by the start of April, we will be in an even better place. The time is now. Please do not let us down on this. Be leaders and show the D128 students that it is what it is like to lead. Thank you. The next message is from Kim Bissin. Thank you for all of your efforts with getting our kids back to in-person learning. I truly appreciate it. I am writing to tell you, I urge you to vote for in-person learning to resume April 5th. Our community has worked hard, abiding by the guidelines to slow the spread of COVID-19, and the results are evident with the low numbers of positive cases. As we will be able to continue offering testing for students and teachers are fully vaccinated, there should be no reason not to offer in-person learning. Thank you for your consideration. The next message is from Elise Mann. Thank you for all you've done to get us to this point. Please vote for in-person learning to resume April 5th. The spread of COVID has dramatically dissipated, as seen in a significant decrease in numbers over the last two months. In addition, more than 3.5 million doses have been delivered, not to mention that many of the teachers are fully vaccinated. Schools in this country have been attending school in person and playing sports since the beginning of the school year without a problem. There is no reason not to be in the buildings full-time. The teachers are doing the best they can, but as mentioned in the school board meetings, the teachers are having a hard time completing the syllabus with the current setup. Please vote yes.
Mary Tadu, Communications.
The next message is from Chris Coglan. Dear Board members, I am writing in support of choice, whether in-person or remote, a full in-person option for those students and families that want to be back in school. The value of having a choice in in-person learning as one of the options has already made a huge impact on my daughter Emily, who is a sophomore at LHS. Next year, her brother and sister will join her, and I am for the district going back in person for a couple of key reasons: social and emotional learning and support, day-to-day engagement with other students and their teachers, the opportunity for the district to learn what needs to be done for a full reopening with mitigation in the fall. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Mary Tadu, Communications.
This message is from Dale Sherman. Thank you for considering another step toward the restoration of an optimal educational experience in D128. I applaud your efforts, but ask that you not celebrate tonight's likely yes vote as if it were a destination. It is just another positive step on the bridge towards what the students and parents are entitled to: full-time, in-person schooling, five days a week. The proposed four-day schedule is insufficient and creates additional transactions for students and parents. If the goals are to minimize movement and maximize instructional time in the building, the new schedule does not accomplish either. Regarding Wednesdays, does it really require an entire business day to clean the building after two days of partial use? Could such work not be done on a rotational basis and after hours? This would cost overtime, but it would enable five-day instruction. What benchmarking have we done with the schools who have figured this out locally and around the country? Thousands of schools have been fully open with minimal issues since August. The statement in the last meeting was that 10% of Illinois schools have been fully, or I'm sorry, 10% of Illinois students are back in school full-time seem to be embraced by a few board members as a sign that D128 is somehow doing well. That is not the case in the eyes of most parents. Pointing to statewide failure does not make D128's approach seem more successful. Four disjointed days is better than two disjointed days, but it is still not five full standard days of instruction, I'm sorry, in-person schooling. People don't stop with this step. Our, please do not stop with this step. Our students and families deserve more. Lastly, the commitment of most board members to full-time in-person schooling this fall has been lukewarm at best. The lack of conviction may well result in exacerbating declining enrollment. Parents have to make choices now about private schools if they cannot get the education their students deserve in D128. It would prove very helpful for parents to know tonight that the Board is affirmatively committed to doing whatever it takes to ensure all students will enjoy full-time in-person schooling in the fall.
Mary Tadu, Communications.
The next message is from David Acosta. While I appreciate the effort it has taken to get a plan in place for returning students to the classroom, the hybrid model you are suggesting is not adequate to meet the needs of students. This is merely a plan that will tiptoe into the idea of a return to school and doesn't fully put children first. The goal on a return to school is to offer all kids the option of full-day in-person learning with close-to-normal social interaction, while offering any, anyone who doesn't want to attend, a remote learning option as an alternative. As stated previously by myself and many others, there are plenty of schools, public and private, that have been open since last fall within many parts of the United States with districts much larger than D128. Why is it that our, our district sees the need to ease back into school and see what happens? We have testing, we have vaccines, we have examples of what good looks like that can help us return now, not later. There is a strong sense of caution with this school board and advisors that isn't necessarily rooted in science. If you were, if, if it were, you would have a group of medical advisors outside of Lake County Health Department and the Binax team. Medical professionals such as infection, infections, disease experts, epidemiologists, pulmonary specialists, all of which could have guided you sooner on a plan to reopen. Instead, you have had lawyers come in to advise you on legal ramifications. Even though you have stated that it is not driving your decision-making, it has come up many times during previous school board meetings. So it is in the back of our minds of the school board, to say the least, and doesn't provide a fair balance, a fair balance approach to the decisions being made, nor does it help the community understand that this can be done safely. We know the virus is epidemic and will be with us for years to come, so we have to learn to live with it and not fear it. You are sacrificing the well-being of many kids academically and psychologically with the choices you are making, and we can, we can't afford to sacrifice anymore. It's time to be bold and make up for lost time. This letter is from Becky Mendoza. Thank you to all the members of the Board for taking the time reading all recommendations, as sometimes we don't all agree, but we need to think first about the kids' mental health that they are truly having. Wanted to thank all staff from janitorial to teachers for the great job in our schools. Wanted to do a big shout-out to Mr. Isabella and Mr. Zabo for helping my son during a most difficult time during e-learning, motivating him, really putting in extra time and helping him mentally. Our family is so excited and happy that our son CJ is now attending school. He has been a great example of a child who needs to be in-person learning. Since he has been back in person, his grades and personality have improved so much. He was having a hard time getting up and out of bed and was not able to focus, plus depression is a true reality that he was going through. We need to continue to go forward, not back. As you, as you make a decision tonight, the Board also needs to think about in-person summer school, as the district has just decided to do only online. We need to have a person, we need to have in-person summer school, or have two options. There is no excuse for not having an in-person summer school, as the weather will be great. The district needs to use the outdoors and be more creative. The Board needs to be more open to new ideas, especially now more than ever. We truly thank you for opening our schools and getting our kids back. And the last letter is from Lisa Hannigan.
Mary Tadu, Communications.
Thanks for all you have done to try to provide our children with a semblance of schooling during this pandemic. Now, however, is the time for all students who want to be in class to their respective campuses for full-time academic instruction. Please fully reopen our schools for full-time instruction in April of 2021. Our teams have suffered enough, and they need to learn how to get up, get out of bed, get dressed, get out the door like they once did. Additionally, they need to relearn how to be fully engaged in a classroom setting without distractions of home and other family members about. It is also important for you to consider adding instructional time to the academic schedule. Our students, especially those in AP classes, are missing out on valuable instructional time and teacher assistance with the reduced weekly teaching time. They need their teachers to have enough time to teach them the required material. Please resume full in-person instruction at the beginning of April. Summer break will be here before we know it, and our kids haven't really started school. Thanks for all the time and effort that you have invested in our schools on behalf of our teams. Please do what the experts suggest and reopen our schools. That's all.
Pat Groody, President. Pat Groody, President.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. So let's move to the main order of business and talk about our next option.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. As the Board will remember, and community members who tuned in or watched the meeting link that we sent out as part of our communication toward the end of last week, no, we had a discussion last week about adding an option for students to attend all day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday on our existing schedule. So what we said at the end of that meeting with some consensus from the Board without voting is that we would review that tonight, have any additional conversation, and the administration would make a recommendation, and then we would ask for a second, any further discussion and a vote on that recommendation. So we've added a couple of things here. We have data from the survey that we put out, I'll share with the Board and the community tonight as we move through the presentation, but we're going to touch base on metrics tonight and a little bit on CDC IDPH guidelines and what we think is coming from the state sometime later this week. A rationale for consideration of the option, including precautions and protocol, and our testing, vaccination, social distancing, and 50-person space capacity, the retention of current options as part of that recommendation, and then the actual addition of the all-day in-person student attendance option. And then we're going to share some of the data from our surveying with you, and then we'll talk briefly again about the schedule and how that will work for students. We will recommend the start date, which we talked about at the last meeting. We'll talk a little bit about logistics, lunch, transportation, and other logistics considerations, procedures, social distancing, and contact tracing. Then we'll make a recommendation, and then if the Board votes to affirm the recommendation, then we'll talk to you a little bit about a binding choice survey that will follow. So that's really the outline of the evening. So Bryant has been nice enough to put that in some slides for us, so not only the Board, but the audience can follow along as well. So Bryant, if you want to pull up the first line.
Grandly Superintendent.
Okay, just, just a couple of comments in general, because occasionally we hear a couple of the themes that we've heard tonight about opening school. We have said for the last four or five meetings that we are planning for a regular opening of school in August. Of course, the Board and the administration and the community moving forward will have to assess where we're at at that point, but everything's pointing favorably that toward the end of the summer, we should be in a position that we can start in a regular school year model. So I want to say that again for the record, and say that emphatically and very clearly. There has been, from my standpoint as a superintendent, there's been no reluctance on the Board's part to embrace that concept, both in individual conversations with all of you, as well as the many meetings that we've had when that's been mentioned moving forward. So I just want to say that for the record. The second thing that's on our list of things, so I'll just pull that out of the list, is the issue of a lawyer and liability and in those things. Of course, the Board is the governing agency for the school district, has to know what, you know, what our, our position is on a liability. Of course, you need to know that, but we have also said that none of the decisions that we've made have been based on the lack of the district's liability insurance, but it is something that the Board needs to understand and be aware of, and so that will continue to be part of our conversation, just as we need to navigate six-foot social distancing, 50-foot space caps. That's all part of the conversation. It doesn't mean that we're not moving forward or that we won't start the regular school year normally, but those are things that the Board has to consider. Of course, in your position, your elected positions representing the taxpayers of the district, and if you want to look at it from a business standpoint, $100 million business that's based on taxpayer revenue. So just want to say those things upfront. Okay, so the purpose again tonight is to discuss a possible addition of an all-day in-person student attendance option to existing options after spring break, and we always ask Pat to do a little bit with the metrics. So Pat, I think we've updated a few of those numbers, but if you just want to give us a, you know, a quick overview of where two communities stand right now, that would be helpful for the discussion.
Okay, so then again, from the test positivity rate, we're still in a reasonably good position, but, and also as, as we're seeing in some other areas of the country, over the last one to two weeks, we are seeing a slight increase. So, you know, overall, still hanging in around that 3% range, but you can see in Libertyville, for example, we've gone in the last week from 1.79% to 2.52%, and then at Vernon Hills from 2.53% to 3.59%. You know, again, I would throw some caution to these numbers. These numbers can be very, very heavily influenced by the type of population being tested. The more the asymptomatic cases you have, the lower the numbers are, the less, the higher the numbers are. But nevertheless, again, significantly better than what we were experiencing in that November-December timeframe. But, you know, as the CDC has continued to say, I mean, something to keep an eye on over the next weeks and months, to hope that we don't see any further deterioration in the current conditions.
Pat Groody, President.
Next slide. That's it. I will say, then I'll make one other comment if I could on the metrics. So again, test positivity rates are in a very favorable zone right now, but, you know, just so everybody understands, because I know a lot of people are celebrating the progress that's being made, but per the latest CDC guidelines, the case rate, so again, the community number of cases over the last seven days, per 100,000 population, in Libertyville, 151.4, and in Vernon Hills, 135.1, and both of those numbers continue to be in that red elevated zone per the latest CDC guidelines, which came out, I think, what, two or three weeks ago? Okay. So we're seeing significant improvement in positivity, but, you know, still a significant amount of community spread. All right. And so I think people just need to understand that, and if nothing else, that's just a continued plea to be safe, be careful, wear your mask, social distance where you can, do the right thing, so that we don't see any further increases in community transmission.
Pat Groody, President.
That's it.
Any questions for Pat?
Lisa Hassel, School Board.
Pat, could you review for us your sources for the data?
So this data is off the Northwestern site again. So I know Bryant and I, we both just kind of go out there, and again, it's, it's only the two main ZIP codes in Libertyville and Vernon Hills, so Libertyville 60061, Vernon Hills 60061, Libertyville 6048. And they give the seven-day positivity rates, the seven-day case rates, and then they show the trending in the data, but it's, it's from that website.
And the Lake County Department of Public Health has not been updating
No.
their numbers in a way that makes it usable data for us.
No, again, they show the case rate data, all right, and they have continued to show that, although the metric is slightly different, if I'm not mistaken. And so they have some fudge factor you can put in there to get to the same numbers, but they, their testing data is just not updated. Okay. So that's why we've gone to the Northwestern website. That's updated every single day.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Pat Groody, President.
Okay.
Pat Groody, President.
Next slide, Brian.
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Do you want to quickly cover this for us, since you did at the last meeting?
Sure. So this is a combination of CDC ISBE and IDPH school guidance. Again, what is required for schools, the use of appropriate PPE, including face covens prohibiting more than 50 individuals from gathering in one space, so that's ISBE and IDPH. Again, requiring social distancing be observed as much as possible. Schools conducting symptom screenings, temperature checks, and at Libertyville and Vernon Hills, we self-certify that, you know, all the individuals coming into the buildings are free of symptoms. Again, require an increase in school-wide cleaning and disinfection, and then also contact tracing, combination with isolation, quarantine, and collaboration with the Health Department.
Grandly Superintendent.
Okay, all very similar to what we covered at the meeting, and that the Board and the community has all heard in the public arena. Okay, Bryant's pulled up the next slide. So what's the rationale for consideration of all-day in-person student attendance? We have a confluence of a number of factors which really lead us to the point that we can have this conversation in earnest and be at the point that we're going to make decisions. So among those things, Pat has been great at keeping us up to date on metrics since back in July. We really appreciate that. But essentially, what that story tells us that our external local communities, so outside the school district itself, Libertyville and Vernon Hills, the data tends to be better than it has been in the past, with the caution that we all need to keep doing what we're doing to ensure that, you know, we don't have a reverse trend there. Our internal school communities at LHS and BHHS, our members, based on our testing, is, are very good. Again, we're on our eighth week. I had my eighth test last week, so we've been doing this for quite a while, very simple process, very, very fast process, and a turnaround of results. But we know from that that our internal, inside the district, at our two buildings, our, our community is, has gotten healthier and healthier over a period of time. So also our precautions and protocol that we've taken since really the beginning of the school year and that we put in place. So our mass temperature scanners that we have at both buildings, anybody that's here at the meeting tonight, walk through the scanner at Vernon Hills to get in here, the protocol that follows that. All of the building protocols that Mark Koopman and our two Assistant B&amp;G Directors at both buildings have worked with John and Tom to put in place in the building. Again, if you've been in one of the buildings, you can see the significant work that's been done on those protocols, very impressive work, and I would call that best-in-class for what we've done from that area. And then a focus on the PPE, you know, our, our wearing of mask, our washing of hands, doing the things that we need to do during the day, including six-foot social distancing and 50-cap limit of people in one space during the school day. So I mentioned Binax testing, Binax now testing before. Again, gives us a great snapshot. I will do our running advertisement for that testing. If you are not testing your, your students, kids at this point, we would highly encourage you to do that, because it allows us to have a much better picture of the health inside our district. And by testing regularly, we, we have found several students that were asymptomatic that had, didn't know they had COVID, and the result that we found them pretty quickly in testing, you know, resulted in not having to quarantine 50, 60, 80, 100 kids from the day. So you can still sign up for testing. We encourage you to do that. Again, very non-invasive, very quick process with a quick turnaround moving forward.
And Dr. Lee, if somebody wanted to go back and see the presentation that you and Dr. Groody gave to educate our community about the testing, the weekly testing that's now in place, where could they go to see that presentation?
Uh, we, Brian, we just have to look it up. I think we recorded.
I think you can contact me, and I can send it to them, too, so.
Do you think it would be ADA compliant to post the link somewhere on our website, so that if parents are considering it and they want to, you know, I know that it was sort of a one-and-done thing, because everybody's working so hard, but maybe we could get more people to sign up for the testing if they're on the fence about it, if they could see the presentation and have some of their questions answered?
I can see what I can do. We don't have the recording of it. All we have is the slides, but I can send them the slides, or I can try to post them.
Grandly Superintendent.
And I, you know, I, I'm pretty sure I can speak for Pat on this. If we had, you know, a number of parents, let's say 10, 20, 50, who wanted to sign up again, I'm sure Pat and I would be more than willing to do another session.
Yeah, maybe it's not a one-and-done thing.
Yeah, no, no issue with that at all, and I'm sure Scott Mor, Dr. Morcott would join us, too. Not a problem.
Thank you. I know how hard you're working, but maybe that'll Thank you. I know how hard you're working, but maybe that'll just get
Yeah, absolutely.
Closer to that 80% of our population.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that we, we do here on the testing is that some parents may be reticent to have their children tested because if they do test positive, then they may be quarantined from school, which would be true. However, if the student is ill and continues in school, a number of other students and/or staff may be impacted by that, including classmates during the day, but also if they're participating in athletics or extracurricular activities. You know, it could mean the whole team has to be quarantined. So I, I would encourage parents to still, to consider that for the health and well-being of the, you know, entire school population at, at both buildings and within the district. So we will keep, we'll keep pushing away on that. And of course, as the spring season comes, it's hard to believe, and most people don't realize this, but football started last week. So in some other large number of sports that are going to be played in the spring, all of those students, if they're currently remote or they're in school and they're not testing, will have to test. So that will drive our overall number of tests moving forward too. So and again, if you have any questions, you can contact me, you can contact Pat, you can contact Mr. Kelly, John and Tom at the buildings, and we'll get you information, help get you signed up and, and get you in a slot that, that works for your child moving forward. So all good points.
Let me just a couple of quick comments. So a couple of things. One, I know I've seen some comments from a, a number of residents on this, on our participation rate, and they want to know why it's so low. Do we have a rough idea how many students are not enrolled because they are previously infected with COVID? My sense is it's relatively small number in the grand scheme.
It would be small.
So I just want to make sure people are clear on that. I mean, it's, it's probably in the low tens kind of number overall.
Easily, easily.
So, so that's not a material impact on our participation rate. And the other issue, I just want to make a comment, because there've been stories in the news about some other districts that have mandated the testing. We chose not to do that, okay, for, for two reasons. One, yes, this was an area where we did seek legal counsel and based on legal counsel's advice, it was our understanding that we really didn't have the right to mandate that for school purposes, not for extracurricular activities. So we made the decision to not mandate it for school purposes, but to mandate it for most, not all, but certain extracurricular activities that are, you know, close contact kinds of things. And the second reason we did is because we did a survey and we listened to the residents and 80% of them said they would sign up for it. Okay, so we really didn't feel it was necessary to, I'll call it push the envelope on, on what we really felt we could legally do. Now, I know some schools have made the opposite decision. Elmhurst was featured, I think, quite prominently on the ABC News this week. And, you know, they're getting some pushback from some of their residents because they've mandated the testing. So we cho- we chose a different course. The last comment I'll make real quick is we've also had some feedback from some residents inquiring about the safety of the testing program. And so I just want to reassure everybody, there really are no risks. In other words, I believe a resident had inquired, a resident inquired this week about what the long-term safety risks were from repeated testing. There really are no risks. I mean, it's a very simple nasal swab. So there's no pain. It's not like taking a blood sample, which you would do for an antibody test, all right? So there are no safety risks or are no long-term consequences. Yeah, I mean.
And it's being offered under the direction of qualified personnel.
Correct.
It's not like teachers or coaches are doing this.
Yeah. And again, that's a good point. And that was another option we considered. Frankly, we considered there, there was an option that we had available to us, which was a self-sampling, more of a home test. Actually would have still been under the, the care of a healthcare provider by video. All right, but we chose not to do that. So we actually chose to go with, you know, professional healthcare provider, thinking that that would provide some level of assurance. All right. So I really just want to throw those things out there since we've had some inquiries over the last week on.
Pranjus Lee, Superintendent.
And I think, again, just to make this point, what the testing allows us to do is maintain a good handle on the health inside our two buildings among our students and our staff. So it is, it's really a worthy, it's really a worthy process for, for us to go through. So, okay, Brian, I think we can go to the next slide, please.
Pranjus Lee, Superintendent.
Uh, let's see. Okay, educator vaccination. Let me once again give the board and the community an update on this. First of all, we are very fortunate that the Lake County Health Department and the Lake County Superintendents Association, which I'm a member, longtime member, developed a partnership early on, number of weeks ago, to map out a strategy to be able to safely and efficiently execute the two doses of the vaccination for anyone that works in Lake County schools. We are well into that process. A number of the staff members here tonight have either received their second vaccination or will this week or next week or the following week. So by the end of the first week in April, if the vaccination supply continues, we should be in a position at most, if not all, educators in Lake County have both of their Moderna vaccines, which is what they're using for educators. Just a quick compare and contrast here to other areas in Cook County, so north, northwest, west, southwest and south, and some of the other collar counties, we are the only county that I'm aware of that has a vaccination plan for educators like we have here. It's very cooperative. Two schools were chosen in the Lake County area, Stevenson High School and Round Lake High School to actually host those vaccinations, really, really lots of logistical work to do that and very impressive in, in what they've been able to do. So we're very fortunate here that we're not out searching for our own solution, which is the way it is in many school districts in the state. So again, that's one of those other confluence of kind of events that our, our staff is being vaccinated safely and efficiently and as quickly as possible moving through. I'll use myself as an example. The week before my 28th day, which is when you can be vaccinated again, I received my email by, via AllVaxine. You can go in now and set your appointment up for what was this week for your vaccination. So I am literally at day 29, the, the day after my 28 days, and that's kind of how it's rolled in the county. That's really great for our staff. And it's not just teachers, it's also administrators, it's also our, our B and G staff. It's also all of our instructional assistants and everybody that works in the building. So, you know, that's really great as we're moving forward. Brian touched a little bit on social distancing and 50-person space capacity. And we talked about it that at the meeting last week that those are guidelines, but that the state is allowing, you know, local districts and local school boards and administrators to, you know, kind of flex those and remain in the, trying to remain in the spirit of that. Lake County Superintendents met with Dr. Carmen Ayala, who's a state superintendent, who's really terrific on Friday. And Carmen let us know that updated guidance from IDPH and ISBE is forthcoming, probably by the end of this week, which will further relax social distancing a bit if students have masks on and will lift the 50-person space capacity as long as people are socially distanced within that capacity. So that allows us some additional flexibility. And we were moving down that path in other school districts in our area. Were because of the other things that I've described that we've been able to do here. So testing, vaccinations, you know, our protocols, our PPE, all of those things together allowed us to have the discussion that we had last week about, about moving forward and kids being closer together in the buildings as long as they have masks on. And then, again, I touched on liability earlier. I think we have a good, you know, kind of handle on where we're at. And council believes that if the district were engaged in litigation in this area, that based on all of the other things that we're doing, the fact that the six-foot social distancing and the 50-foot, the 50-person space caps were still in place, that he could successfully defend us based on all of the other things that we're doing.
Pranjus, can we go back to the 50-person space capacity? I just want to be sure I understand it because previous to now.
Lisa Hassel, School Board.
It was my understanding that regardless of the size of the space, the limit was 50. It could be a gymnasium, it could be an office.
Pranjus Lee, Superintendent.
That's correct.
That, that is, that is, that is absolutely correct.
And now what we're understanding is that it, like the restaurants have capacity limits, it's a number of people or a percentage of capacity. So it takes into account the size of the space. So it's now my understanding that because this 50-person space capacity limit, which we understood to be very specific and very restrictive before, which would preclude us from serving lunch, really.
Correct.
Now we have a different way of looking at it that's more based on the size of the space. Is that?
That, I think you've restated it very well, much better than I could have, Lisa. I think what we've been led to believe by Dr. Ayala, again, who's a real straight shooter and is in communication with IDPH, is that they're going to move to exactly what you said. They're going to move to a percentage of space capacity. Some people saw the news today, nothing to do with school, but a high interest of people in Chicago with baseball. They're not going, now going to start to allow fans at Wrigley Field and guaranteed rate for White Sox games at a percentage of capacity. And the city actually calculated that for both ballparks, 8,000 plus at both parks. And of course, social distancing between the seats. So yes, it is. And there is an irony there, or there was an irony with the 50-person space capacity. As most people are aware, up until 3:25, when the day was, our normal school day was over, we could only have no more than 50 people, for example, in the gym. But at 3:25 and 1 second, if we had a basketball game that evening, then we could have an additional 50 people in there. So the irony of that, I think the state's just cleaning that up as they've made other decisions. They're dovetailing things to make, I think, better sense at this point. So that's a great point, Lisa. Okay, and then, so the other thing that we talked about at the meeting last week was the importance of retaining current options. So currently, as everyone's aware, we have remote and we have a hybrid half-day in-person option. And we have a number of people that were interested in both of those options as they manifested themselves over the course of the year. And we felt it was very important to retain those two options in the decision-making process and then build the additional option for all day on top of what we're already doing, basically. So as we did the surveying, which you'll see shortly, Brian can start pulling this up. We're going to show you a couple of panels of, of data here. So when we posed the survey, we posed several questions. And one of the questions was, you know, what, what are your student or students in right now? And then we moved forward a progression to, you know, if you chose right now, what would you choose for your students? So if you look at Libertyville up there first in the current model, you got about 1,100 students in hybrid in-person and then by 510 and remote. Okay, as we did our surveying, about 1,078 chose all-day in-person. We'll put these into percentages in a couple of minutes to be maybe easier. 287 selected hybrid in-person and 327 selected remote learning. At Vernon Hills High School in the current model, we had 434 students in hybrid in-person, half-day, and 756 in remote learning. This is self-reported by the parents, of course. And in the new model, 600 for all-day in-person, 139 for hybrid in-person and remote learning 509. So you can see there's still lots of interest in all options here. So if you go to the next slide. Okay, so here we have percentage. I'm, I'm really going to kind of go to the new model now, if you will. So for Libertyville in the new model, all-day in-person, just under 64%. And then hybrid in-person, 17%, and then remote learning, 19-ish percent for that. And then percentage-wise at Vernon Hills, about 48% for all-day in-person, 11% for hybrid in-person and about 41%, if I round up, 41% for remote learning. Okay, so just out of curiosity for people that might have an interest, if we go to the next slide, here's a survey data by slide by school, by class by school. So it gives you an idea of the breakdown. This is only current selections, like moving forward. So you can see the breakdown between freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors. So at LHS, if you start with seniors and work back, you've got about 237 seniors. Tom would probably tell me we're probably in the neighborhood of 500 seniors-ish. And so you're looking about, you know, 50% maybe or so of seniors and all-day in-person learning. 82 in, in hybrid and then 101 in remote and so on for the other grades. Brian, you want to pull up Vernon Hills?
Just, so it's interesting, the upperclassmen in general have more hy- you know, half-day hybrid remote learning than the lowerclassmen do. I don't know whether that's they, they can master their remote learning better or what, but.
I was kind of thinking it should, would have been the, the opposite.
I would have thought the opposite.
Come back in and finish up and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we're basically almost, not quite, but almost split between all-day. In other words, those who want to come back, you know, at least four days a week versus those who don't. For seniors, it's almost, almost split, not quite, but almost.
Now, if you flip over to Vernon Hills, if we take a Vernon Hills snapshot here, then here's what it looks like for them. So you can see the spread again, starting at seniors, about 147, and then moving down to freshmen. Again, for hybrid in-person, 51, and moving down to the freshmen. And in remote learning, about 98, moving down to the freshman, about 120. So that gives you an idea just how the, the classes broke out in terms of selection.
Quick question on, so this was a survey and not everybody responded, obviously.
Pretty high numbers.
Yeah, we had a very high response, but it wasn't binding. This was not a binding survey.
So what, what, what did it say? If you don't respond, we'll assume? Or did it say anything about that?
What I'm reporting to you and what we did for, for percentages here is really for pre-planning and estimation purposes.
I didn't know if it was asked like, if you're in remote now and you want to go on all, all-day in-person checkbox here. If you don't respond, you're going to stay where you are.
No, no, we didn't do that. It's, it's, it's a straight survey of the people that responded. And, and again, pretty, pretty good response rate, as you might imagine. And it's similar to the response rate we had this summer when we did our initial surveying on remote versus, you know, an in-person option. So the next thing, really for logistics purposes, last panel of, of the data that we'll share tonight is lunch. So as the board knows from our conversation last week, one of the challenges will be finding space to feed students. And particularly because when we're eating lunch, as Dr. Ayala pointed out to us again the other day, the gold standard guidance is with your mask off while you're eating lunch, you need to be six feet apart. Okay, so there's no being two feet apart in a classroom or three feet apart across, you know, an aisle away from somebody in your classroom. So these numbers were pretty important to us. So if you look at Libertyville, let me say first that the hybrid in-person folks, we would contact them individually because they don't have, the half-day folks don't have an option to eat lunch. So they'll come a half a day, you know, go home and eat, the other kids will eat and then come in like we've been doing for, you know, the past month or so. So we're just looking at the all-day in-person numbers. So lunch at school at Libertyville, about 596. I did the percentage on that earlier today. We're probably about 54% of the students that indicated that they would like the all-day option. And then at Vernon Hills, it was about 392 in terms of the numbers of folks. So what Dr. Calentis and Dr. Gilliam will be doing with their staffs is they're already working on potential logistics of how we wear and how we can feed students because we'll have to use multiple locations, particularly at Libertyville to do that. And as we've discussed before, the board's been kind enough to give us some latitude or give me some latitude working with Dan. If we were to the point that we had to rent a couple of large tents. Uh, if we were to the point that we had to rent a couple of large tents or something to make that happen, we could go ahead and do that without having, we would inform you, but without having to come back to you for, um, approval. And we'll only do that if we absolutely need to do it. Uh, if you look at, uh, Libertyville, um, they'll be looking, I believe, at dividing the main gym. Uh, they'll be looking at, uh, you know, one of the two areas, either the wrestling room, new wrestling room or the dance studio and, uh, the cafeteria and other areas in the building to, uh, be able to do that. The likelihood that all, let's say, six hundred of those students would eat lunch every day in the building in the springtime, Don already knows as a high school teacher, not going to happen. But we have to plan for kind of a worst-case scenario, if you will. But the reality is, is those numbers on any given day will probably be a lot less than that. But we have to make sure that if we're bringing kids into the building and they want to eat lunch, we have to be able to facilitate lunch for, um, that number. And once we do, um, if the board approves a recommendation tonight, once we do the, um, once we, uh, do the binding survey, then we'll have, you know, a better handle or a final handle on those, uh, numbers moving forward. So, um.
Fredis?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Twenty-six and thirty, those are students that are currently staying for lunch.
Jim Batson VP.
In hybrid or what are, what are those?
Well, I, I think what happened, Jim, here is, is they went ahead and chose lunch at school when it wasn't, you know, it wasn't that you couldn't respond to that. I mean, we didn't block that survey. So we've got twenty-six and thirty people who.
Okay, I thought maybe it was.
They just thought, maybe I can select lunch, so I want to, I want my child to eat at school.
There are a certain number, there are a certain number that are staying for lunch now for special, uh, reasons.
Right.
I didn't know if that.
Unless your, your point is they may think they're going to grab it and go, right?
Yeah, and those, uh, those, uh, children, Jim, already are accounted for lunch. They're already eating at school. So as John, uh, indicated last week at, uh, Vernon Hills.
So the true number is five ninety-six and three ninety-two.
Of, of the people that responded, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so.
I have a question, uh, just clarity about lunch. So masks are not required only while they are eating. I mean, it's a forty-five minutes, so will they have their masks on except for when they're actually physically eating? Just like on airplanes or restaurants?
That's the idea. And we'll have, we, we will do the six-foot distancing for that.
And. No, the expectation is.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Asked me on the whole time, except for when.
They should put their mask back on, right? While they're in the building. So that, that will be the expectation. That's a good question, Karen.
Can I also ask, you know, I, I don't really know what it would cost to rent a tent and make the outside option available. And if it is prohibitive, I, just as we gave you the discretion to go ahead and do it, if that's something that's necessary, I also would encourage you that if it isn't, um, a waste of resources to invest in making that option happen, because it would be, especially as spring approaches, it would be really nice, I think, to be able to get outside in a safe way, um, if the weather permits. I think, um, I like the idea of giving our kids that option. Um, and if having a tent and picnic tables or, you know, chairs, however, we need to make that happen. I, I, I would encourage that, I, I would encourage it, again, if it isn't cost prohibitive, if it isn't a waste of our resources, to really, um, strongly consider doing that.
Hey, we'll keep that in mind as we do planning. You know, it's just.
Let's just make sure, I mean, I agree with that. Okay, um.
Pat Grudy President.
But let's make sure that it is a good alternative. I mean, honestly, from what I've seen in a lot of restaurants, and I know they're just trying to maintain their business, um, I think we're safer eating inside than a lot of the lean-to shelters that they've constructed outside of restaurants, which have no ventilation. So it's technically outside, but I think in some cases, it's actually potentially worse than inside. So as long as it's a, you know, if it's a nice day and the tent is open and allows kids to get outside and have lunch, that sounds like a great idea to me. But if it's a cold day and we've got a tent that's got four sides closed to it and there's no ventilation, then that would not be a good idea. I'm sure, I'm sure that's how you would think about it, but I just want to make sure that's how we're thinking about it.
Well, we'll weigh all of that. And again, it's good to have all the tools in the toolbox that we would need to.
Lisa, I think your point is we can, we've been the envelope here a little bit. We may go above and beyond to, you know, like I've seen this in Notre, Notre Dame actually did a lot of really good things in the fall to just create some outdoor space for the kids to be outside, to be able to congregate, to have social distance. But, you know, to be outside, okay? And so we may have to think outside the box to create that outside space in ways.
And then I'd ask, I'd ask Tom and John to take, you know, to talk with their teams and see, because if we take, if we have a bunch of students outside, then we have to manage that, right? So we, we have to make sure that, um, you know, they're doing what they need to do, uh, moving forward. So we'll, we'll factor all of that in to the conversations moving forward and know that we have those options if we, um, need or want to do that. So which is.
That might, that might also though help free up space and inside space that you might need for that PE class or that, you know, some other class that's just overwhelming, a room that needs a bigger space and you move into a portion of the, the, the new dance.
Yeah.
Space or something like that. Because what it sounds like is a lot of, the lunch is going to consume a lot of spaces that would typically be used for instructional space of some sort.
Well, that would be part of, that would be part of the flex, right? To, to do that. So, you know, we'll let the teams do what they do really well in terms of logistics. And then whatever else they need, they'll work with me and I'll work with Dan and.
But that'd provide another offer, another option to.
For sure.
I think what I'm hearing is support for all creative ideas shop considers, okay?
Which we great, which of course, we greatly appreciate. Um, okay, next slide.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Okay, so, uh, we talked about schedule, uh, last week. We gave, uh, uh, you know, a written example to folks with an example of the schedule when we emailed all the parents, um, last week to do the survey. Uh, and essentially, conceptually, again, um, a student would come in, um, on a Monday and they'll do periods one and two. They'll, uh, have the, uh, lunch, um, office hours slash lunch period. Uh, and then they would do periods three and four and the potential for office hours at the end of the day or going home or going to, um, you know, co-curriculars or athletics. Uh, the next day, they would start, uh, periods five and six, lunch, and then seven and eight. Wednesday would be teacher-directed remote or teacher-directed day again. Uh, and then Thursday and Friday, that would, um, you know, repeat. So, uh, a student, uh, parent selecting the all-day in-person option, their students will be in the building four times all day, um, during the week. A half-day hybrid would follow the schedule that we're following now, right? So, um, you know, they would be in half of that time every day, but half a day, uh, except Wednesday. Um, moving forward and then, of course, we're remote, we'll continue to follow, you know, these same schedules because remember, our teachers are teaching simultaneously to, uh, you know, multiple groups of students. So they're teaching in the classroom, but they're also teaching the remote, um, moving forward. Um, so that's what a, uh, the schedule would look like and that allows us to build on what we're already doing and expand that remaining the block schedule that, uh, the teachers have done, um, uh, advanced planning for and adjusted to over a period of time. And Pat, I think you had a question about the Wednesdays, didn't you?
Yeah, I just.
Wanted to ask.
I mean, I think we want to address the issue of teacher-directed Wednesday. I mean, I think the obvious question is, why are we not just going back five days a week?
Rita Fisher Curriculum.
Sure, I can answer that, Pat. Um, we, we really believe maintaining this block schedule is in the best interests of all the students and promotes the most effective, uh, instructional delivery model. Our teachers have planned for it. Uh, they can meet the needs of the students in the classroom, those who come for the full day, those who are there for half-day, as well as the students who are learning from home. Um, the Wednesdays provide a third contact day for each class each week. And so that, you know, that in itself gains an, uh, instructional time for students to be meeting in their classes three times a week rather than two times one week and three times the following week. Um, as I said, our teachers have planned really their curriculum, their essential curriculum, to be delivered in this format for the remainder of the year. And we've built in structures, uh, in this block schedule, the office hours that are being heavily used to meet the needs of all students, those who are in-person and those who are learning remotely. The Wednesday provides yet another opportunity to meet with whole groups of students, small groups of students and individual students who need support from their teachers. So, um, we really think that, that this is the schedule that we've used to plan for the remainder of the year, that it, that can meet the needs of every learner and that this is the model that our teachers have planned for and are using really well to, uh, meet with whole groups, small groups and individual students with the structures that we've provided.
Pat Grudy President.
Okay, um, and can I just clarify, when we first did remote learning back in late summer, early fall, if I recall, our schedule had like all periods every day. Was that correct?
Not this year.
Nope.
We've been on the block schedule for this entire school year. Uh, the Wednesday when we first started e-school, um, had required meetings, um, at the start of every single period. And that got to be a bit exhausting for the students.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
There was limited transition time between those eight periods and they were meeting at the start of every period on Wednesdays. Well, the teacher-directed Wednesdays now allow teachers to determine when the start and end time of that meeting is and whether they're meeting, uh, as I said, with the whole group for a group instruction or meeting, um, with smaller groups, um, throughout that forty-five minute period. So there is contact time for each of the eight periods that day, but it's less structured than we first started the e-school, uh, year with.
Okay, and that's, that's what I recall. It was the Wednesdays. I remember we had every period scheduled and we got a lot of feedback from both students and teachers that it really wasn't working for us because basically by the time they got to their next class and plugged in and the classes were so short, they really weren't utilizing that whole period very effectively, if I recall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Among others, right.
Okay, so my one request would be though that we keep our eye on Wednesdays. Um, I think that's one of the areas we continue to get some feedback from the community, I think. And, I mean, I think we heard last week when we pinged this thing that, you know, hey, the AP teachers, a lot of them appreciate it because it is one more contact day and so they are able to cover their curriculum. Um, but I do think we've also heard some feedback. I mean, I know some people have contacted me and there's still a perception out there that Wednesday's a free day. Um, and, and I know that's not the design. I know that's not the intent, um, but I'd ask that we, we continue to keep an eye on that. You know, the, the one other comment I want to make, and I want to be careful how I say this because I know I'll probably.
Pat Grudy President.
Oh, whatever. Um, I, and I'm not doing this to applaud us or anybody else, okay? But I, I do want to make it clear, we, we get a lot of feedback about all the local schools that are open full-time, okay? In particular, and, and I do understand completely, there are a lot of states in particular that have been a lot more aggressive than Illinois in doing that, no question about it. And I, and I also understand that it, it may be working those states, so I'm not making a comment on that. But, you know, we do get a lot of feedback about local schools, including one that's a mile down the road, private school, which I think is Carmel, which is only now going to four-day-a-week hybrid. Okay, they've been at, I believe, in a two-day-a-week hybrid program, um, for most of this year. They did do that earlier than we did. Um, and I think they've done a great job from everything that I've heard, but I think they're only just now moving to a four-day-a-week hybrid and their Wednesday is basically very much like ours. So, you know, I think, again, that's not, that's not, uh, that's not in any way, shape or form meant to compare what we're doing to anybody else in terms of we're as good as or not as good as or they're better or we're better. It's, that's not my point at all. I think it's just that I, I think in general, a lot of schools, at least in our area and in Illinois, have continued to choose this hybrid approach. And, and the main reason is that we have to continue to balance. I mean, we have, what, almost forty percent of our kids are either in remote learning or half-day remote is what it looks like from the survey results. Um, and so it's a matter of balancing the needs of those remote kids with our in-person learners to, to really do that, okay?
Um, so, um, just to sum this up and Rita, thanks.
Hey, Prentice, before you move on, I got a question on that one. And I, this is just a direct question to Rita. Rita, we heard at the last meeting that the biggest issue is getting through the curriculum, it sounds like. Uh, and I, I'm, as curriculum director, I'm sure you're, that's probably one of your big issues. Are you comfortable in saying that this schedule as presented is the best schedule to help get through the curriculum? Because it wasn't, it wasn't getting us there last week, right? I mean, I mean, there was just some concern. Uh, so what, what are we going to do to get the kids through the curriculum? I know we, we clearly strengthened Wednesdays if this is where we're going to go, but is, is this the best schedule to do that?
Yeah, Kevin, that's, uh, that's what I said earlier. I do believe that staying with this block schedule and utilizing Wednesdays in the way that we've been using them is how our teachers have planned to deliver the essential curriculum. And I don't know that I'd agree, uh, we've, we've been meeting with teachers that, that all teachers are struggling to meet the demands of the essential curriculum with the schedule. Uh, so I, I guess I would disagree with that contention that we're not doing it, uh, now. We, we are delivering the curriculum, uh, effectively and we have teachers who feel quite prepared, um, to, um, to ascertain that, you know, that, that they've planned an essential curriculum that they're delivering, so.
Well, Rita, all, all I'm saying is I'm, I'm repeating what I heard last week. Maybe I didn't hear it right, but I heard it last week that there was struggle getting through the curriculum. That was said to us by the building heads. That's, I, I, I mean, we have Tom on the phone, yeah, and John there. I, I, that's what I heard. You know, let's get that corrected if I'm mistaken. I will certainly walk that back, but that's what I heard.
And I, yes, I, I said that that wasn't true for all teachers. There are those who, um, have, you know, struggled to deliver a massive curriculum that has not been reduced by the college board. Last year when we were in remote learning, the college board reduced the curriculum and tested students accordingly. That has not happened this year. So there really is no way, and I think that's the point the principal's made last week, that there really is no way to refine the essential curriculum of an AP course because that's dictated by the college board and it hasn't been reduced. But in many of our other programs, our teachers have planned for this instructional delivery model and are confident that they are, um, successfully delivering the essential curriculum, which they defined early in the year.
Kevin Huber School Board.
Okay. So we are going to work on making Wednesdays better though. Yes, I mean, is that, is that what I'm hearing? Because it, that is the number one, since we started this remote model and to this day, that is just one of the things. And I struggle with this, Rita, just because I have two kids and I can tell you, my kids are busy, uh, busy on Wednesdays, very busy, but I hear from many people who say their kids are not. So, uh, the inconsistency, I think, is a killer in anything when you're trying to run anything. Inconsistency is a killer. So I, I don't, I don't know how we fix that.
Yeah.
Kevin, what I, I, if I could jump in here for a second, I would say, and I'll speak for Tom and John and then Tom and John can speak for Tom and John as well. If anyone is having issues on Wednesdays, you know, in one of their classes or, or with one of the teachers or consistently that they don't believe they're being challenged at all on Wednesdays, then they need to get ahold of John and Tom and John and Tom will, um, you know, do an interface with the teacher because we want to put that parent and student with the teacher if they're seeing those issues. Uh, that's really important in the process that we don't lose that, that that doesn't become a, um, okay, parent had an issue, so they contact Pat and Pat contacts Tom. We want to get the parent directly with Tom or John and work with the teacher so we can find out, first of all, what's accurate. And secondly, if something's not happening, so we can make it happen. And I think that's the way we close that communication loop. So then, um, and Kevin, you're real good, of course, about, about talking to your, um, kids. And I think, as you mentioned, what you discovered on Wednesdays is they're pretty busy on Wednesdays, right? But if somebody made an assumption that my, my kids aren't busy or they had evidence that they weren't busy on Wednesdays, then we want to know about that.
Yeah, and I might, uh, I might add that, uh, our intention with teacher-directed Wednesdays was to allow for a lack of consistency in how the Wednesdays were used, to provide that teacher discretion to use the Wednesdays to best meet the needs of the individual students in their classrooms. So we don't expect that every Wednesday is going to look the same in every class for every student. There may be times when students are doing independent work while that teacher is working with struggling learners to help them catch up. So, um, I, I would say that certainly we want to utilize the Wednesday as well. And I agree with Prentice, if, if, uh, that's not happening, we'd want to know about it. But we also, I also want to emphasize that the purpose of that Wednesday is to provide the discretion that teachers need to work with the students in the way that they need to work with them.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that. I guess my, my only concern is that all I have is feedback that we receive, right? And do, do, have we done anything internally to ask the teachers how they think Wednesdays are working? To ask the kids how they think? Because all, all honestly, all we're here, I'm here, I'm not hearing from a lot of the kids and rightly so, because maybe if the kids aren't getting challenged, are they going to push that button? Some will, some might not, but we just haven't heard, we have three buckets. And I, we've heard from the parents that. But we just haven't heard, we have three buckets and I, we've heard from the parents that say, hey, well, Wednesdays are a little bit, eh. I don't know what the teachers think about Wednesdays.
We had a group of sixty teachers join for a meeting a couple of weeks ago to provide feedback on how the, um, schedule is going currently and how we might look forward to the future of um, in-person instruction as well as, uh, virtual options and uh, those sixty teachers, uh, that joined in that meeting provided, um, lots of feedback on Wednesdays and most of it was positive.
We also did a, um, if you recall, first semester, we did two, uh, all district surveys to students as well. Um, and the first one was when we were running the Wednesdays where all the meetings started synchronously. And that's where we got tremendous feedback that, um, it was not a popular model and design. And when we created our hybrid schedule, the one we're currently operating in, that feedback was utilized to make the shift to the current model of Wednesdays we're using. Uh, the second survey that we gave was after running that schedule, um, for some time. Um, and, uh, ju- I only have the Libertyville numbers, but it was, uh, fifty percent of our students, um, really supported the Wednesdays. Twenty-five percent had no opinion, positive or negative, and then the other twenty-five percent didn't like it. And of the twenty-five percent who didn't, it was split, um, about, you know, twelve and a half percent said, um, I don't have enough to do, and the other twelve and a half percent said, I don't like Wednesdays because I have too much to do. So, you know, it's a change in structure. Um, we had a principal advisory board meeting today at Libertyville. The kids told us, um, overall, teachers are doing a, a great job and they see tremen- they see improvement in how teachers are connecting with them as learners as this model has gone on since January. You know, we've only been in this, this model, um, about six total weeks or so. Maybe I'm wrong with that. Maybe it's a little more set at this point. Um, brand new and everybody's adapting and shifting and I don't have consensus that Wednesdays are a disaster by any means. Um, yes, I've heard from us, very truthfully, a very small um, handful of parents that don't like Wednesdays. Um, I've also heard from parents who do. Um, and I think, you know, we, in those situations when a parent has an issue with a Wednesday, precisely as Prentice said, it's, let's talk about your learner. What does your learner need? Um, and, you know, let's figure out, is the time, is it a student, you know, executive functioning issue and using that time? Is it a teaching issue? Um, and how do we work together with a family and an educator to develop a plan, um, that makes Wednesdays more successful for what the learner needs on that day?
John Guehliau, Principal.
Yeah, you know, I would just add, Kevin, you said that, you know, we've heard from some parents. I, I am honest when I say I have not fielded one call or email specific to a negative response about Wednesdays from a, from a, from a parent. And I live in the community and I talk to parents up and down the streets, uh, as well as in my office. So, uh, and, and I would say that on whole, when I talk to, to students and I'm interacting with students, um, you know, all the time in the, in the, um, in the lunchroom, in the foyer. They like Wednesdays, uh, because it provides a little bit of an interruption to the week. Uh, they like it because they get to see each of their teachers on that day. That's an important connection. And when they don't like it, it's because, like you said, uh, it's, it's too much. There's too much synchronous meeting and there's too much to, uh, to kind of keep track of on a single day. So I, I have rarely if ever heard from a parent a negative response and from a kid, it never has to do with, well, I'm bored, I don't have anything going on. It's the opposite. It's, it's too much synchronous work and, and it's because these teachers know that they need that day. And so they're not using that day as, uh, you know, go work at your own pace, do your own thing, you don't need to check in. It's, it's synchronous meetings. So again, I, that's, I'm not talking to a hundred percent of the kids face-to-face for sure. Uh, I have, I put out the same, uh, kind of temp check that Tom was talking about that he put out at Libertyville and our data, uh, is really pretty parallel to what, uh, their students said. So I, I still feel like Wednesday is not perfect. Nothing we're doing is perfect, but I do think to Rita's point, it's the best structure to get us through to the end of the year with as much as that curriculum, uh, in place and completed as possible.
All right. Well, thanks to Tom, John and Rita. I appreciate it. Let's, let's keep going. I, I apologize for delaying it.
Oh, no, it's good questions, Kevin.
I mean, just, just one more comment. I mean, in essence, what, what's intriguing to me about this schedule is it's almost college-like. Okay, so for our freshmen sophomores, it's probably a much more challenging thing to learn how to do effectively. But when you think about it, our juniors and seniors, they might be going through their freshman college year kind of malaise wake-up call thing here a little bit early if they're not getting full utility out of Wednesdays. But hopefully from whatever that experience is this year, they'll be better prepared even next year than they would normally be leaving, leaving, uh, leaving high school because I don't know how it was for you guys, but I had a Tuesday and Thursday class every week and like that meant Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I had to do everything outside on my own. Uh, I think I had to do more learning outside the class and inside. So it's just, it's really different.
Yeah, and on, on just a final note too, I, I don't want to lose sight of the office hours that are built into each daily schedule too. We, we had LST members, uh, join our group of sixty, uh, last week too. And, uh, have pulled teachers as well. The utilization of those office hours to support students who are struggling um, with, you know, this year of COVID, um, has been really effective. And that's a uh, something that is built into the schedule that would be really challenging to replicate in an eight-period day and a shift to that right now um, for everyone all day, um, I think would make things more difficult for every single student.
Okay, so we, we'll close that up, but let, let's just, just keep an eye on it, I think is, is really the request.
I wonder when, I know we have been, uh, pretty diligent about sending out those surveys and we've only been in this hybrid model, as you said, Prentice, for about six weeks. Um, when is the next survey so that we can rely on data-based evidence as opposed to anecdotal evidence to know how this schedule is working so that we can make the adjustments that we've continued to make to improve e-learning throughout the year?
Well, I would say we'll continue to have discussion about that. I mean, we don't, we don't, as you know, we don't, we don't shy away from asking, you know, students their opinions, as John and uh, Tom have indicated here, nor do we, uh, you know, shy away from, you know, talking with staff members as well. So I, I would say Lisa, probably when we walk down that final path, that, you know, after we start and we get in a groove and we're offering an all-day option, uh, then perhaps then, you know, we come back and, and take a look at several things down the stretch. I will say this, there are, uh, and this is something that will be beyond my time here that you, you know, Denise will have discussions with, um, uh, Rita, John and Tom, the instructional team, uh, here moving forward. But um, as you look at things we can take out of um, COVID nineteen and things that we had to do that are positive. Rita's working with a, uh, really diverse group in the district right now uh, to look at, uh, some of the things that have transpired and some of the pivot, pivoting that we've needed, needed to do. Uh, and there are a number of people that look at the block schedule and, and see some real advantages to a block schedule uh, in the future. Not particularly with a directed Wednesday, but you know, so maybe you're alternating every day. You know, one week is three days and two days and next week is two days and three days. But, uh, I think there are some very interesting, uh, things uh, that will come out of the discussions that, you know, Rita's working with, uh, again, this diverse, uh, group of educators from the community. So I'd say perhaps if we, if we make this adjustment, if you, um, um, go to move forward with the recommendation tonight, then, um, you know, we wouldn't have any hesitation, uh, you know, doing that. Like I think Tom had mentioned, you know, we actually did two surveys, you know, kind of in the fall and, and when we started uh, on things. But I do want to make the point again, and they're all really good questions, Pats and, and Kevins and the other questions that have been raised. But I think it is really important that we try and connect parents with educators in there. So if somebody is having some difficulty or they're having questions or they're not understanding or they don't feel like their kids are being challenged, or they need additional assistance, please call us. Okay, because Tom, Tom and John and their teams, Rita at the district, we're, we're more than happy to work with parents uh, to look at, as Tom described, that individual learner and the needs that that student has and what we can do to have them be successful. You know, remember in the big, the big picture, the big scheme of things, you know, uh, the teachers want to do the best job they can do within this. They're very cognizant that there's material that they need to cover, that they need to move through, and they've been adapting all year to be able to do that. Right? In, in different modes, uh, in order to do that. So, uh, you know, we'll continue to learn and and the teachers will continue to do what, what they do. But when there is, um, either a real or perceived breakdown uh, for the student, then we want to know about that so we can, um, work to help. And the teachers will want to be obviously a part of that solution, okay? So I think if there are no other comments on that, then, uh, we've just got a couple of other bullets, uh, to hit here. And then we can wind this up. So Bryant, you want to move on to the next? Uh, I think that's our last slide, actually. Um, so transportation, we talked about at the last, uh, meeting. So this will require a little bit, uh, more logistics on transportation because right now we're transporting in the morning and at the end of the morning. And then we're transporting at the beginning of the afternoon and the end of the afternoon. And now we're going to have students that will be transported in the morning and in the afternoon. So um, part of what, uh, John and Tom will do um, is, uh, both campuses have a little di- different situation. We're driving, for example, because of the availability of parking spaces and all of those. So there'll probably be a targeted question or two coming from each campus on the binding survey about whether somebody's going to drive. And then we're going to be able to, do you, are you going to need to be bussed and, you know, those kinds of things. So, um, you know, transportation just requires some more logistics, but that investment in logistics and getting that done is what will drive this and make it work. So, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do there, uh, to make that happen. So lunch, we talked about a little bit earlier. I don't think there's probably much, uh, more to be, uh, said there, but on the binding survey, we'll pin people down uh, to make a commitment. And then, uh, Tom, I know I talked with Tom and his team. I didn't have a chance to talk to John today, but I'll see John in the morning. And so both teams, even last week, were thinking about, okay, we'll get numbers and then we'll be able to look at what we need to do for lunch. So, you know, there, our, our teams are already one step um, ahead of the game on that.
Is it box lunches? Is that the concept there?
Uh, I think probably, uh, Pat, I, I think, you know, it's a little, I, at least in, uh, I haven't talked, again, I didn't have a chance to talk to John today, but Tom and I had a brief conversation about this. And, uh, if you think about you know, two or three hundred kids standing in the cafeteria waiting to get their green beans and their chicken, um, or their salad, uh, it's, it's more demanding. So, and if you're loot, if you're, if we're using multiple locations to feed kids for lunch,
Yeah.
then you try and get the kids through the cafeteria and then up to a lunch spot where it'd be easier to assign them and perhaps have the bunk, box lunches prepared.
Yeah.
But we'll work on that.
We might want to just make sure whatever the option is, it's clear next time we survey people so they don't expect to come in and see the salad bar if that's not what we're gonna have.
And the kids, so the, the students that stay all day have a forty-five minute lunch, but a half an hour before that, they have office hours, which means where do they go? They go to the lunch, they go to their lunch spot for an hour and fifteen minutes?
Karen Loonstadt, Secretary.
And Karen, I think what we know, the re- and Dom is, I could see Don smiling through his mask earlier because Don spent his career in high school, like we have. And what's going to happen is we move into spring, kids are not going to stay in the building for lunch. I mean, they're gonna go, uh, particularly at Libertyville because there are many places that they have access to. Uh, and a number of the, uh, older students drive to school. Um, they may jump in a car and go someplace, but we'll have a better handle on that one.
Will the students who drive to school be coming and going through the back entrance?
I think so, yeah.
Throughout the day?
Yeah.
Not just.
I think so.
Not just coming in, the gates closed till school's over? It's.
I'm guessing Karen, I don't, uh, honestly, you know, I don't think we're that far.
Okay.
I'm sure Eric Moroche is that far down the plane at Libertyville or John.
For the neighborhood as well.
Of course, of course.
I would assume it's whatever it's been.
Whatever.
We've had open lunch.
Well, the thing is, it'll be, you know, it, it will still be, yeah, if they leave for lunch, um, you know, if we were on a regular schedule right now, we have kids that do out lunch, right?
Right.
And they leave the campus. So we, we have a model for that and we would take a look at that and adapt from there, but that would be one of the things on the logistics list.
Tom Coolen Test Principal.
Okay, so.
And John and I will work closely with Chartwell's, our food provider. Um, and, you know, they, once they have a sense of the numbers, they're, they'll, they'll work up different options for us that we can, um, you know, not only determine what's realistic for us to do, but also we can, um, decide, you know, what's best for our students as well for that situation.
Okay.
So and then other considerations, uh, we talked about procedures last week and, and that would be, you know, kind of coming out of testing if we get um, you know, a student who's positive or we get a report, you know, from a parent that a student's been positive. So then contact tracing follows that. And, uh, our nurses work with Lake County Health Department on that and they, they do an incredible job uh, in terms of, um, of doing that. And I think Bryant described last week that, you know, we just have to be cognizant that as we have more kids in the building, the potential for a few more kids to be quarantined, then maybe quarantine now if we have a positive. Uh, just because they're going to be in the building all day and they're going to have contact with more, um, students. But again, our overall numbers are really, really low, uh, here, um, moving forward. And then, uh, last bullet point is the starting date and, uh, what we talked about last week was, um, right after, uh, we get back from spring break, we would continue what we're currently doing. So our hybrid half-day and our remote learning would start normally right after spring break. And then, uh, if the board, um, approves, uh, the recommendation tonight, then we would start the, um, all-day in-person option, uh, the following week, which would be Monday, April fifth. That gives us a little bit of cushion after spring break and traveling that people may do and, um, those types of things. Uh, before we bring those students back for us to make final, you know, real-time adjustments, uh, moving forward. And then, uh, we would start April fifth and our intention would be, um, you know, to continue that, uh, balance of the school year, again, with the idea that everything we're doing right now is planning to open school regularly next year. So kids are signing up for their normal seven or eight classes. They're doing everything that we normally do, uh, on cycle to open schools, uh, next year. And then, um, you know, as we get into the early summer, then the administration and the board, you know, will, um, you know, that's the default position. If, if anything happens, I was actually asked a question today and whether we could address this tonight. And so what happens between now and the end of the year if there's the numbers blow up and they get really big? What will we do? Will we go all the way back to remote? Will we do a half-day hybrid? What will we do? And the answer to that is we wouldn't know until we could see what was happening, right? But the good news is that we have three tools in the toolbox now. We would have an all-day, we would have a half-day hybrid and we would have remote that we could execute if we needed to do that between now and then. But I think Pat, you're our da- you're our data guy. I think probably between April and the end of the year, uh, you know, unless there's a huge surge like there was in Alabama, and that was just like crazy surge.
Really talking, what, six weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're talking between now and uh, the seniors are still graduate, uh, we go through the first week of May because we added, or first week of June because we had it. So yeah, it's six, seven.
Seven weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, we'll just, we'll continue to evaluate our metrics, including our internal metrics and we'll just, you know, I, I'm I'm highly confident between now and the end of the year, we're going to be fine.
Yeah, I, I, I am too, and I think, I think we are. And, uh, the students who are in the building right now, I think, have been, you know, really cooperative. The staff's working at it, uh, and everybody's going to have an interest in doing. If, if you want in-person learning, then we all work on an environment where we can have in-person learning. Uh, and I think that's a real credit to our students, it's a real credit to our staff and, you know, the building administrators and the parents as well uh, for, um, working with their kids. So with that, here's our, here's our recommendation. Our recommendation is that on April fifth, um, we, uh, provide an additional all-day in-person option uh, as described tonight, which would allow students to come in, um, you know, all day for four days, uh, a week. Wednesday would continue to be a teacher-directed day. And remember, it's important that we use that language. It's not an asynchronous day, it's a teacher-directed day um, on Wednesdays, um, again, with a start date on April fifth. So that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Is there a motion to, um, accept the, uh, administration's recommendation on providing a full-day hybrid option?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, Pat, just, and no discussion, but clarification on this one, Prentice. Just to be clear, because I know there was some confusion at the last meeting. Because we, we kept the A and B grouped out there. It, for the full full-time return, there is no A and B. If you're full. If you're full-time return, you go to periods one through four on Monday, five through eight on Tuesday. You have your teacher-directed Wednesday, one through four on Thursday, five through eight on Friday. That's for the full return. And the hybrid will be, you'll stay in your hybrid, well, I mean, we won't even talk, but that A and B is only applicable to hybrid.
Half-day hybrid.
Okay, because that, that, it was a little bit confusing at the last meeting. I remember some people going, well, they're not changing. And I'm like, we're changing a lot. We're giving you a full day for four. So I just want to make sure that's very, very clear.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
So nothing changes for, for remote. Anybody that's in a half-day is in either the A or B cohort.
Right.
Right? And all the others are expected to be back in the building four days, full days.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Casey, anything? Just want to make sure I don't miss you. Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, Pat, thank you. And, uh, last thing that we'll say, we've, uh, spent a little time talking about the Binding Choice Survey. But, uh, uh, most likely by the end of the week, we'll have, uh, Binding Choice, uh, Survey, the latest early next week. Binding Choice Survey out, uh, to parents, uh, at LHS and, and VHHS.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, the buildings will have, you know, real numbers, um, to work with moving forward. And as always, if there's anything I need to update the board on, I won't hesitate to do that, of course, along the way. Okay? So thank you very much. Um, I want to thank the district leadership team for their thinking on this. Tom and John's, uh, building teams, uh, as well, because we've had a, an extended group kind of think about this and how it might work. Uh, and the logistics and, uh, we're very appreciative. We think this is a step toward normalcy, uh, in the fall. So thank you very much.
Okay, great. Okay, um, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. All right, thanks. Good night, everybody.